Good morning and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 8, 2006. We are meeting, as always, in City Hall, here in Council Chambers, room 370, John Farrow Council Chambers, here in City Hall, which is 200 Spring Street. We invite folks to come down here for these open meetings and give their public testimony on items that are before us. For those who can't make it down here to City Hall, we are also broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast each evening. And we also webcast on la-city.org website at www.lacity.org. Also invite folks to tune in on Council Phone, which is a way that you can listen to council meetings and our committee meetings by dialing a number that is also available on our city's homepage. Right now, we are waiting a quorum to begin our meeting. We need 10 members, two-thirds of the group, to start the meeting. We have council members Grul, Weezer, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Weiss, Zine, Hier, and Han. So we are waiting just one more member, and we will begin the meeting. Mr. Padilla is here. Please call the roll.
Cardinals Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Garcia, Garsetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Smith seconds. Unanimous vote if there's no objection.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, so ordered.
Mr. President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless before the purview of the City Council. And we'd like to invite these two speakers forward to each give two minutes of testimony. Tom Keelty, welcome you back to Council Chambers, and to be followed by Greg Durfee. Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you for acknowledging me. I'd like to start, ladies and gentlemen, by acknowledging and expressing my gratitude to our councilman, Bill Rosendahl, for the comments that he made to this council last Friday regarding the outrageous and reckless conduct of Aimco. I'm a middle-class citizen who was locked out of my home at Lincoln Place two months ago. And ladies and gentlemen, I followed the rules, and Aimco has not followed the rules. I paid my rent. I invested in my community. I helped my daughter with her math homework. I stayed put so that our daughter could have the feel of a small and stable home, a neighborhood in a large and personal city. Ladies and gentlemen, my wife and I demand a fair process and a fair result. We follow the rules, and we demand that Aimco follow the rules as well. Ladies and gentlemen, Aimco is gaming the system. Aimco is laughing at our mayor, and Aimco is laughing at this council, flouting this council's authority and flouting the authority of this city. Aimco is depending on the benefit of bad advice given to them by Rocky Delgado, who takes contributions from their attorneys, Latham and Watkins, and from Robert Bisno. The city opens itself up to damage claims by standing by while Aimco engages in this reckless conduct. Ladies and gentlemen, please record the conditions that protect the tenants, if for no other reason to keep the disabled and the elderly from being evicted this summer, and if for no other reason to protect the city from damages claims. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Greg Durfee? Welcome, Mr. Durfee.
Morning, Mr. President. Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Durfee. I live in Hollywood, California. I represent my company, Mount Mariah Productions. You guys are in the process of going over some homeless situations in Hollywood, and what I would like to do is just share a little bit of my heart. The majority of the homeless in Hollywood are as under 30 years old, and their kids that are looking, or young people are looking to fulfill a dream. And about three or four years ago, I was in Councilman Garsetti's office and shared with him a vision about a performing arts center there on the boulevard to where these kids could have some really good opportunities with people within the industry and to be able to pursue their dreams and their visions in the performing arts. When you consider some of the things that you would like to do on Hollywood Boulevard concerning the homeless population, there are organizations like Ben &amp; Jerry's, Starbucks, that offer opportunities for new stores to go up to where they also employ the people that are benefiting from the employment, to employ some of the homeless people, but then also to give back. One of the things I'd like to see with this performing arts center is something that where the kids could perform while the tourists are in town, to where they can actually develop their skills. Having talked to some of the people in the industry, there's an excitement that wells up within them to be able to be part of that. So I just wanted to maybe just put a little seed in your mind when you think about that, whatever homeless issues you deal with in Hollywood. And please, Mr. Garsetti, give me a call. Let me know what we can do to help you and to facilitate that.
Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate your testimony today, and we will be in touch. Any other public comment from members of the public? Seeing none, this closes our general public comment. Mr. Clerk, first items before us.
On the regular agenda, item one is an item notice for public hearing, and the applicant does consent to a continuance to March 8.
Okay. If there's no objection to that continuance, that'll be unanimous vote, so ordered, and continue to March 8.
Item two is also an item notice for public hearing, and the applicant consents to a continuance to February 28.
Okay. If there's no objection to that, that'll be unanimous vote as well, so ordered.
Items 3 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. On items 3 and 4 are commissioned appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk.
That would leave council with items 5 through 14.
Okay. 5 through 14, colleagues, any specials? Mr. Zine? Number 7, Mr. Zine? Are there specials 5 through 14, colleagues? Okay. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to actually continue item 5 till February 15, and I'd like to call 9 special.
Let's call 9 special. And is there any objection to continuing till February 15, you said? 1-5?
Yes, please.
If there's none, that'll be unanimous vote, so ordered. That'll be continued. And any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items. Mr. Clerk.
Items 15 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. On 15, 30, have no public speaker cards. Anybody wishing to be heard on any of those items? If not... Which item? What's the number, ma'am? 21, is it? Okay. Item 21, we'll call special. It's for public speaker cards. Otherwise, we'll open and close the public hearings on the rest of them. Specials, Mr. Parks?
13, fourth with.
Okay. We'll go 13. We'll do fourth with. Mr. Weiss?
26.
26. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a reconsideration of yesterday's item number 20 for a technical change.
Okay. I'll turn to that as soon as we get through the agenda. Item 20 from yesterday. Mr. Reyes?
Okay.
That's 1-1. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, please prepare the roll on the balance of the items and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
That would take you back to the items called special, but do you wish to take up the reconsideration?
Yeah, let's reconsider item 20 from our last meeting. Mr. Clerk, why don't you just let us know what that item is for everybody?
Yesterday, item 20 with Council File 02-0169 was a special event motion in CD1.
Okay. Great. Please, on the reconsideration, do you want to be heard or on the substance of the... This is just for reconsideration initially. Do you want to be heard on the substance of the reconsideration?
No, just... I wasn't giving the detail on what the change is.
Okay. Hold on one sec, then. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great. That's before us. Go ahead, Mr. Reyes.
Something as complicated as changing the word from pylons to cones. Just before the firecracker runs, we're all invited.
This could be a radical change of policy, but if nobody wants to debate it, so be it. Seeing nobody else wishing to be heard, let's open the roll on that item as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Padilla?
Fourth with on 15, please.
Fourth with on 15 and 13. Fourth with as well. Any other fourth with, colleagues? Okay. Let us return, then, to the regular agenda, and if we can take up the commissioners first.
That would be items 3 and 4, and those are the appointments of David O. Washington and Sean O. Burton to the West Los Angeles Planning Commission.
Never heard of either of them, but if they come forward here to the table, I'm sure we'd be happy to hear from the Chair of Plum Committee. If... Mr. Reyes, do you want to comment on the commissioners at all? If not, Mr. Rosendahl's pressing button? You okay? Okay. Mr. Rosendahl?
Well, I just want to say good morning to the two gentlemen here, and if I could just ask them generically why they want to be on this commission, we'll start with Sean Burton.
Thank you. Good morning. I had the pleasure of serving on this commission once before. Found it to be very engaging and interesting, and enjoyed serving the city.
David?
As a native West Side-born individual who truly cares about the community, and someone who saw council, was the council president, and was advised that this would be a wonderful experience, that's why I want to be involved in my conversations with you, sir.
Do either of you have any reflective thoughts on Lincoln Place? It's been a big public story for quite a while now. Is there any attitudes, reactions, or is there anything we can do in your mind about that issue in keeping affordable housing in the 11th District?
That specific issue I'm not familiar with because I've been newly appointed, and planning is new, but I do know that affordable housing is tremendously important to me due to my expertise in health care and holistic well-being, that affordable housing and living in community, that is healthy, green space, transportation issues. That's something that's a large priority to me.
And you live in Venice?
Correct. I am a resident of Venice.
Sean, do you want to...
Yeah, I don't have any specific comments on that project, but I concur with Mr. Washington that we... In my year on the commission, we did not see many opportunities for affordable housing in the 5th and the 11th council districts, and I hope to see more.
And just for full disclosure here, Sean Burton and I served on the Commission on Taxing Policy for the New Economy to restructure the tax system in the state. So I've had the pleasure of knowing you for a couple of years, and I know it'd be great to have you on that commission. Gentlemen, would you react to the Ellis Act if you could? The Ellis Act is being used by developers, saying they're getting out of the rental business, and they're kicking the tenants out, and they're bulldozing the buildings, and they're building high-end condos. Is there something about the Ellis Act that you know, or are there things we can look at in the Ellis Act to protect affordable housing rather than just development?
That's a specific act I am not familiar with, but I would look forward to talking more with your staff and learning more about it.
Sure. Yeah, I don't have any specific comments on the Ellis Act, but I know it's been a problem in Los Angeles, and we work a lot with creating workforce housing as opposed to luxury housing and creating homeownership opportunities for the people working and living in Los Angeles.
When you say "we," is this a private sector business you're involved in?
It is a private sector business.
What group are you with?
It's a company called City View Communities.
And what have you done in those situations?
We have, in each of our projects, we strive to have a number of affordable units, and we also strive to sponsor projects that come in and serve the workforce. So not high-end projects, but projects that serve teachers, firefighters, police officers, city employees, et cetera.
I'm looking forward to your guys' leadership. The 11th District is gridlocked. We have trouble with even the notion of development at this point because we don't know how to deal with the gridlock we have. Any comments on the paralysis in the West Side in terms of getting around?
Took me an hour and 15 minutes to drive down here from the West Side this morning, so I appreciate that as well. I think more transit-oriented development and political leadership around those lines. I mean, that's something that's needed.
I agree, and my little part is I do nothing but ride my bicycle on the weekends. So little pieces like that and kind of adhering to a larger plan and strategically thinking through development, I think, is the way to go.
Well, I want to congratulate the mayor for bringing two great folks to the West Side Planning Commission, and we look forward to working with you in the months and years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Grul is next, to be followed by Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Padilla.
I'll let the... Mr. Garsetti? I'll let Mr. Reyes go as the Chair of the Planning.
Okay. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman Grul. We did have the two gentlemen before Plum, and I appreciate them taking the time. Mr. Washington, if you could talk a little bit about your background and your work that you do. I think we had a little exchange on that during Plum. Would you mind sharing with my colleagues your work?
Sure. Currently, I'm a philanthropist. I'm the nonprofit... Executive of a nonprofit organization that works with at-risk use. The Promise is Foundation.
Please hold my time, please.
And I've had a few questions around how does that apply to being involved with the West LA Planning Commission. And my training is in the sense that I approach health care from a holistic perspective. And you can't really address individuals' mental or physical well-being without addressing where they live, the community in which they live, how long it takes them to get to school, the stress that's associated with that, affordable housing, green space issues, transportation. So I'm looking forward to bringing that unique perspective and expertise to the Planning Commission.
We are... We have been engaging this process, and Councilman Rosendahl has asked questions. How do you create accessible housing? How do we move in a direction that allows us to allow folks who work in entry-level positions, positions that speak to our childcare, our senior care, cleaning our offices, that adds to the element of how we decrease the amount of traffic if they can live closer to their homes? Mr. Burton, you spoke of transit-oriented district and things of that nature. Where do you see these opportunities evolving in the West Side of the city? And what do you feel is holding us back from trying to achieve those goals? I think you referred to it in the periphery, but maybe if you can speak to that.
It's a very challenging question. I think the best opportunities for transit-oriented development are along the major arteries on the West Side, but there's been quite a bit of community opposition to the denser housing that would usually go on those arteries. So I think it's working with the communities to explain how transit-oriented development and denser housing and more affordable housing is in everybody's best interests.
One of the objectives I have this year as Chair of Planning Land Use and Management is to ask that basic question. Where do communities see housing in their own community? Can they take a role and be proactive in working with the colleagues here in their different districts and actually give us an understanding of how they want to define themselves as a community? In the past, we've gone in and we've imposed it. With AB 283, we've said, "This corridor has to change. This corridor has to change. These pockets, this is where you put housing. It's allowed." That's it. But I feel if we can create an environment, either working with commissioners, working with Plum, and ask that very basic question, then perhaps with the new director, this new spirit and energy the mayor has brought, and the team that's evolving, this executive management arm, that perhaps we can address that question in a more constructive fashion. So I appreciate, one, your experience, the fact that you are stepping up to the table, but it really is about educating and informing people as to how we could change and give them an opportunity to define themselves as a community. So we're going to have a fun year this year, and we'll keep working together. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Grul, next.
Thank you, Mr. President, and pleased to stand here to welcome somewhat a new member and a returning member of the West LA Planning Commission. And just to maybe ask both of you the same question, and I think Mr. Reyes alluded to it as well, the importance of planning at land use and also transportation. We introduced actually a motion this week to look at how we determine trip credits, how we look at a development, and how it changes the dynamic of a neighborhood, and what those mitigation measures would be. And so maybe just to ask both of you what... How you see the relationship between planning and transportation in the city of Los Angeles? And hold my time.
It's a difficult question. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's a number of ways that can help. For one thing, it's foresight of the mayor, it's foresight of the council and leadership on transportation issues, and creating opportunities for development. And I really want to stress the active engagement with neighborhood councils. One of the things I learned in my year on the commission was to come to appreciate the value of the communities that came before us. I mean, we were fortunate enough in the jurisdiction of the West LA APC to have Venice and Westwood and other communities that are energetic and engaged and informed. And often, they would approach projects, not because they were bad projects, but because the developer and others had not come and spent time and talked to them about what was appropriate for their community. And I think more active engagement between the planning department, the development community, and neighborhoods about the types of projects that are appropriate for transit-oriented development and others would make a big difference.
One of the observations I've had in terms of planning-related issues is trying to keep in mind the overall strategic vision versus just the pieces, so remembering the whole. So in terms of transportation, I think in some communities, if you do one development here or another development there, as individual occurrences, they don't seem as though they may impact transportation. But when, if you take a step back and you keep in mind the strategic vision for the whole area, you in fact do see that it makes quite a difference. So I think following suit on a frame of mind of keeping that present is important. So that's how I would answer that question.
Great. And it really is... I mean, we're all trying to answer that same question here, so I'm sorry.
Right.
Thank you.
That's a tough question for the two of you, but I think you heard it also from Mr. Rosendahl, that the kinds of challenges he's facing in West LA... I mean, I was talking to other electeds this weekend that represent that area, and, you know, talking about the fact that to get now from Santa Monica to Westwood or into Beverly Hills, whatever it is, it has become, you know, gridlock. And we all know that a lot of people in some of our communities would say, "If you don't build it, they won't come." Well, we know that in fact people are coming to this region, and either we're going to be smart about that development, or they're going to move to those outlying areas and cause us more traffic, and we won't have a lot to say about it because they'll be moving to those other communities. So I want to challenge each of you and all the commissioners that have come forward that you get oftentimes focus, and I know I do the same thing, on a particular project as a commissioner, and you're looking very much on how do we do with this neighborhood and this community. But look at that larger picture and give us feedback. It's really a two-way street here as far as from the council and the commissioners. You are every week for many, many hours having the discussions with neighborhoods and with developers and others, and I think we would very much appreciate that kind of feedback as a city council to how we might be able to change laws or rules or look at how the Ellis Act or other things are impacting our neighborhoods. And Bill and I have been talking frequently about, because I have a very similar project, a Chase Knowles project in my district, we approved on Friday, and it was historically significant, trying to improve, keep the tenants there, at the same time knowing they had rights to build more. But it is kind of a push and pull. And so as you go through that and your experiences, we hope you will keep in touch as you go forward. But thank you for your time and commitment. This is a huge endeavor, being a commissioner. It's not just a few hours. It's a lot of your life, so I appreciate your commitment there. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. Our next speaker is Mr. Padilla, to be followed by Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I defer to Mr. Reyes, Chair of the Planning Committee, to go through some of the critical issues on the planning side that have worked their way through the council and City Hall in the recent year or two, or what lays ahead, to get your thoughts and input on. But I just wanted to stand today to say, number one, West LA Planning Commission, you're going to have your hands full. I think every planning commission in the city has its hands full with issues and proposed projects coming before them, but West LA in particular. And the reason I know it is not because I represent parts of West LA, but in trying to work cooperatively with the development community for strategic smart investments. Those of us in the Valley sometimes have to say, "Hey, you know, don't forget about our part of town. You know, we're looking towards investment, too." And finally, just want to also say some good words to Mr. Washington. We haven't had a chance to meet yet, but have known Sean Burton for a couple of years and colleagues, as others have already articulated, can vouch for his experience in the planning arena, not just from academic perspective, but the great work that he's done in bringing housing to working families in Los Angeles and elsewhere in the state and in the country. I think that's going to bode well, bringing that perspective, that experience, that knowledge to responsible decision-making in this capacity. So congratulations to both of you for the nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Washington, I want you to know that I am in strong support of your nomination to the Planning Commission. But, Mr. Burton, I was just sitting up there with the council president. The council president told me, "If I get this off, you'll tell me my quote's off," but something to the effect of you're being a danger to the community, and he thought that I had to oppose your nomination at, you know...
Our Channel 35 viewers, that's humor, just so we know.
But anyway. His words, not mine. Anyway, you're both... You've been there. You know how truly thankless this job is, and you're going to be there soon, Mr. Washington. What I've mentioned at Plum, I just want to reiterate here that, you know, we have so many contentious issues, as Mr. Padilla pointed out, that come to the West LA APC, and they will then, from you, oftentimes move on to the main Planning Commission or to Plum. The most important thing for both of you to remember is that you're sitting in a quasi-traditional capacity. You have to remember the different standards of review that apply, and yet at the same time, you're taking fresh testimony from members of the public, members of my staff, as well as from city staff. And I know that you both, given your backgrounds, are very capable of doing the precise legal work that you're being called upon, and I look forward to working with you in the future. And despite the council president's advice, I'm going to vote for Mr. Burton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. I too can attest to the character of these two individuals, and I think they've well covered, and I don't represent the West Side, so I'll be brief, but I just want to congratulate you both. Very happy for you as a friend, as well as knowing your abilities to serve. And of course, you have my strong support, not only today, but throughout your service, so congratulations to you both. And with that...
Thank you.
Maybe that's a little premature. We still have to take a vote, so if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Welcome aboard, commissioners. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 7 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Number 7, Mr. Zine?
Hey, Mr. President, this is a cooperative effort between the city of Los Angeles, in particular, Los Angeles Police Department, and the school district, LA Unified School District. And we have with us this morning three representatives from the LA Unified School District Police Department, and their Chief of Police, Larry Mannion. This involves the 14, and there was a discussion in budget and finance if it was 3 or 14. We've resolved the matter to provide 14 surplus LAPD motorcycles to the LA Unified School District Police Department for their motor squad. And if I can have the Chief of the LA Unified School District, Chief Mannion, speak on behalf of the school police, and exactly what those motorcycles will be used for in the cooperative effort, if any, established between the school district police and the LAPD. Chief Mannion.
Thank you. Mr. President and honorable council members, it's a pleasure to be here today and represent the nearly 500 sworn and civilian personnel that I have the honor of commanding in the Los Angeles School Police Department. I'd like to also commend all of you because I have the opportunity to work with you so often in various projects throughout the city, and you're always there, standing ready to assist in such a professional and dedicated manner. Plus, I can honestly say that Dennis Zine worked with me for many years on LAPD, and I also am very proud to have him as one of our Specialist Reserve Officers working for the law. the Los Angeles School Police Department. Standing with me today is my acting deputy chief, Michael Bowman, and my motor supervisor over here, Jose Lopez, who will commend those personnel who will actually participate in this great collaborative effort. What we're going to do with our motorcycles throughout the 703 square miles that we patrol is assist the kids getting to and from school, participate in traffic safety programs with the 13 municipalities that we co-mingle with, and help the LAPD on a daily basis to cut down on traffic collisions and make it a safer area for our kids to get back and forth to school so they can get that education that's so desperately needed. But from my heart, I would like to thank you with the deepest gratitude for what you're doing. A motorcycle costs approximately $20,300 to purchase new, and with these Kawasaki's that we're receiving from Chief Bratton and yourself, it's going to make a magnificent difference for my patrol structure in the field. So on behalf of all of the personnel that work for me in the Los Angeles Unified School District that I'm so proud to be part of, thank you for your generosity, and I guarantee you, we'll use them in the right manner to provide a safe learning environment for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief Mannion. And if I can disclose, Councilmember Smith asked me the number, there was an original confusion of three to 14. What the plan is, they'll take the 14, which are salvaged motorcycles, and what they'll do is swap parts back and forth to make some motorcycles that will have all the proper equipment. When you're getting used motorcycles, sometimes some of the items aren't working as well as they should, but when you can salvage items from one motorcycle to another. So the request will be for the 14 motorcycles at a dollar apiece, which I'm sure the chief will be happy to write a check for the $14 to cover that, which we do with surplus equipment. But again, these are surplus motorcycles, they've done their use with the LAPD, and they're going to be salvaged. So the school district will be able to put those into use to help. And I will say personally, I have seen them in action with our LAPD traffic officers, motor officers, working in a cooperative effort from the San Fernando Valley, I'm sure, Janus, Hondown and San Pedro. The biggest problem I heard from the school folks is that traffic around school, arrival and dismissal, is a huge problem, which impacts the communities. So with the motorcycle officers working in coordination with our motorcycle officers and traffic officers, we can bring some peace and tranquility to the environment. And I know that former school board president, Jose Wezar, who supports the fine work of the LA Unified School District Police, very supportive of this donation, shall we say, of the 14 motorcycles to the school district. So the motion will be, and the request will be, that we will provide 14 to LA Unified School District. Chief, thank you for you and your representatives being here this morning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that. Mr. Padilla, to be followed by Mr. Reyes and Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Zine, I rise in support of this item today for a couple of reasons, and maybe make a request as well. Primarily because this is another, maybe small example, but a good example of the city and the school district working together and what we can collectively do. I know it's all, all the rage these days in political conversations, you know, who's, what the state of the school district is, who's in charge of the school district, proposals for improving the school district, that sort of thing. So I like to think that in some small way, we're contributing towards that closer working relationship, that cooperation and collaboration that leads not just to safety, but better education of our kids. And just want to point out, colleagues, one of the items of discussion before the commission on LAUSD governance, we see standing before us Los Angeles school police officers, and they have a police department for LA Unified School District, side by side with the Los Angeles Police Department that patrols the streets and the neighborhoods within our city. But as both departments, I think, would quickly tell you, what happens on a school campus does not happen in isolation, and indeed, it's a reflection of what happens and what's going on in the surrounding communities. So whether it's formal MOUs, protocols, in terms of how the two departments are communicating and working together, there's got to be ways to improve upon that. And that's one of the areas that I'm looking to pursue as the new chair of the Education Committee. So pleasure to see you gentlemen with us today. We're glad to be of assistance in small ways, but let's not forget about the bigger ways that we can be working better together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker. Followed by Ms. Han.
I'd like to give my time to Councilmember Wezar.
Okay. Councilmember Wezar?
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And welcome, chief. I had the pleasure of reading the oath of office to this magnificent chief when he arrived at LAUSD about a year and a half ago or so.
Three and a half now.
Three and a half. Time flies. And at the school district, but time goes faster here at city council, let me tell you. And I'm very proud of the work that the school police is doing. And I was also there when our colleague, Mr. Zine, presented the first motorcycle, and he looked happier than a boy on a tricycle when he was on that motorcycle gunning it. But since then, I know that, as the chief and Mr. Zine pointed out, the one motorcycle has really made a difference around our schools where drop-off and pickup centers present some traffic snarls and safety issues for our children to go to school and go back from school. So it's been a lot of, it's been a great benefit to the school district, this one little thing. And here we are donating more motorcycles to the school district to increase the safety around our schools. So I want to thank both the school police, the chief, and also Mr. Zine for making this possible. This is the kind of creativity that we need to continue to work in partnership with the school district in the city. So thank you very much. And Mr. Zine, I'm looking forward to seeing you on those motorcycles again. So it was a pleasure seeing that. Invite me, please, when you go do that again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. And our final speaker is Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I rise to support this great joint-use project between the city of Los Angeles and the school district. I have been experiencing a rash of crime, gang-related shootings in my Watts district, and found to my horror that many kids, particularly those who are in the housing development projects, are not going to school because they are afraid. And there is a program called Safe Passage, particularly in the Watts area, but it is vastly understaffed because they rely on volunteers to line the way between the school and their homes. I'm really hoping that you will take a hard look at meeting with Mike Cummings, who is heading up Safe Passage, to look at where he could really use the help, making sure those kids get to and from school. This morning, I was, just handed a police report where an 11th grade student was walking to Locke High School, and she was at 103rd and Avalon, and was forced at gunpoint into a car and then sexually assaulted. So it is real. I think you can make such a huge impact. I'm glad that we have a part in this. But seeing more school police officers on motors in and around the school, to and from home, I think will make a big difference in keeping our kids safe and keeping them in school, which is the only way many of our kids are going to be successful in life, is if they complete their education. And what a sad state of affairs that our kids aren't going to school because they're afraid. So good luck. And again, I'd like to even help set up a meeting between your motor officers and Safe Passage, because I think that would be a great partnership.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. That completes our speakers. Madam Clerk, if you please prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you again, chief, for being here, and thank you all for.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Spending time with us today. And if we can also send number 10 forthwith, Mr. Weston has asked for that. Next item, please.
Item nine was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han, item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just wanted to call this special because this is sort of a success story in the making, and this is kind of the first step, and we're all partners in this, and it's one of those stories I hope we can all pay attention to and watch and maybe duplicate in our own council district. This is, today we're approving $100,000 of CRA Housing Trust Fund from the Wilmington Industrial Park. And every redevelopment project has, 20% of their funds must go for affordable housing. And we're taking $100,000 of this Housing Trust Fund money from the Wilmington Industrial Park to clean and remove contamination from a city-owned site in Wilmington and to clear the title to the property. It's an old oil well, we have some issues with contamination. So the first step in turning this into affordable housing is to clean up the property. And then Habitat for Humanity has been selected through a community process to develop eight single-family homes on this property. So the cleaning of the soil with this money is the first step, and then Habitat for Humanity will build eight homes on this site. It is a success story in making. We've taken a vacant, blighted, city-owned piece of property, and we will eventually make it a place that is livable, affordable, and we will build a neighborhood. So just wanted to call that special to let you know that this is a good story in the making. Let's pay attention to it and see if it, we can usher it to success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Mr. Reyes?
Because I remember five years ago when we started, we were dealing with these economic development issues throughout the city. And at that time, Councilmember Han, we were identifying pockets in Wilmington and areas that have a history of being neglected, and the relation between an economic engine like the harbor. And so it's great to see this kind of policy unfold, because now we're drawing and establishing, I guess for lack of a better word, that umbilical cord. Those elements that can feed and nourish communities that have been neglected. So I applaud you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Nobody else wishing to be heard. Madam Clerk, if you can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. If we can reconsider item 14, Mr. Parks has asked for reconsideration. If we can, anybody wishing to be heard on the substance of that? If not, can we please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, 14 is back before us. Why don't we take that sequentially next, Mr. Clerk? Sorry. Okay, let's take up item 14.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate reconsideration. We asked the two representatives from the city attorney's office, and also asked Mr. Fujioka to come up from the city attorney's, the CAO's office. Basically, this item has been reviewed by both personnel and budget and finance. It really addresses a very significant subject, is workplace violence. City Attorney's Office is looking to create a unit that specializes in that investigation, and they're here to make that presentation.
Vivian?
No, go ahead. You guys.
All right. Vivian Swanigan, I'm a deputy city attorney in our Labor Relations section, and I'm here with the head of our municipal council branch as well. I am also the chairperson of the Citywide Threat Assessment Team. I wanted to express to all of you how important this issue of workplace violence is. We all hear in the news about the workplace violence incidents that actually end in shootings and killings. Here in the city, of course, we had an incident last year, which made the papers, where we had a city employee shoot and kill two other city employees. Recently, the post office has had a situation where they had a shooting in the workplace that resulted in the killing of a number of their employees. What you don't hear about is you don't hear about those instances where through the efforts of the Citywide Threat Assessment Team, the city attorney's office, the LAPD Threat Management Unit, and the Personnel Department's psychiatrist over there, you don't hear about the incidents that we prevent. You should all have a log that I asked to be passed out to all of you that shows that since, well, this is a log of our cases that we received in 2005 and gives a brief description of them. In 2005, the city attorney's office worked on 93 workplace violence matters. Back in 2002, there were less than 10. Okay? That's how the increase has been. If you look in the log on number 25, it involves a case, the City of Los Angeles versus Victor Lugo, that came out of our airports department. That was a case where we had a city employee on probation who threatened to shoot and kill his supervisors if he did not make probation. He made that threat in front of three other coworkers. The coworkers did not report the threat to their supervisor. One of the reasons is they have not been properly trained over there in regards to workplace violence. Eventually, one of those three coworkers did tell his supervisor about the threat, but told the supervisor, I don't want this to be official, I want to keep it confidential. And guess what? That supervisor kept that confidential. So when the employee was terminated on a Friday, they called us hysterically on Monday, telling us about the threat and the fact that this employee had been terminated. We had to drop everything that we were doing. It took two city attorneys interviewing seven individuals and getting declarations from all of them, and setting up restraining orders and going into court and getting restraining orders. We also had to send the levels of supervision home because we did not know where the defendant was. We obtained restraining orders, and when the LAPD went to serve Mr. Lugo with the restraining orders, and this is the important part, they decided to arrest him outside because he had a number of weapons registered to him. What they found, when they actually went into his place, was that they found that he had rifles and guns stashed all over his house, including sewn into the lining of his couch. He had created little, I forget what you call it when you're fighting out in the field, but little dugouts underneath his house, defensive positions, so that if he had actually been at home at the time, if he'd been allowed to go into the building rather than being arrested outside by the Threat Management Unit, he would have held out in that building and we would have seen him on the news. He had, like I said, things dug underneath. So this is a situation where someone had everything that he needed to carry out his threat. And it is a situation that, you know, this particular individual, of course, was then subject to felony charges. And he told the LAPD Threat Management Unit, when they asked him about one of his registered weapons, he said, you're never going to find that one. And the bottom line is that there are, and that's item 25 on our 2005 Workplace Violence Log. And so when you read item 25, you don't see everything and all the work that went behind it. But there are a lot of things that have to be done, and the city attorney's office has done a lot of reorganization and work in order to free up myself and the other two attorneys who have been working on workplace violence. Unfortunately, the pace is such that it really needs people that are devoted specifically to workplace violence. Most recently, my office has taken away litigation from us that frees up our time somewhat. But we still have a lot of advice matters. And the office has allowed the persons in my unit to go out and utilize our time to conduct training in the various departments. We conducted training for animal services, for, we trained all of the employees in the Department of Recreation and Parks. We did training for the airports, but unfortunately, the airports did not make the training mandatory. And so there are a lot of individuals who did not get training over there. And we are meeting with the airport's front supervision on March 1st to discuss what can be done to fix the situation at airports. Because in the situation I told you about, we asked the employees why they didn't report, and they simply said they didn't want to be responsible for this person being off of probation. So the thing is that this particular subject is so important, and it's something that really should be at the top of our priority list. Unfortunately, even though we had a shooting just last year, it does not seem to be at the top of the list. And it needs to get up to the very top. My office was responsible for seeing that the Citywide Threat Assessment Team was fully staffed and began meeting. We didn't actually begin meeting until 2003, even though the Citywide Threat Assessment Team was mandated by city council back in 1998 after the Piper Tech shootings. And we took that initiative to go ahead and make sure that the Citywide Threat Assessment Team was a viable entity and that it can meet and assist departments. So the city attorney's office has been redirecting resources regularly and for several years at this point, since 2003, the office has been redirecting resources. And I just can't stress enough that there aren't enough, we do not have the time to address inherent problems that we run across in a department. When we see there's an inherent problem, we are too busy trying to handle the next case to address it. And we really need full-time attorneys working on this. And it's something where if we don't address this, eventually, something is going to fall through the cracks and we are going to have another Piper Tech, another street services. This issue, I cannot stress enough how important this is.
Council members, David Michelson with the city attorney's office, I have the municipal council branch, I will be brief. Vivian is in the trenches and dealing with these very important issues and explains the concern well. The statistics really tell the story best. And Vivian, if you could just briefly tell the council members here. And Vivian, if you could just briefly tell the council members here, statistically, roughly, how many of these cases came into our office, say, two or three years ago compared to how many came in in 2005, which makes up this list that's in my hand?
Well, in 2002, we had less than ten cases. By 2004, we had fifty-six cases. But in 2005, we had ninety-three. So you can see the jump just from 2004 to 2005.
The trend will not change, and there's no reason to believe that, quite frankly, we're not going to even have more of these incidences in 2006. As Vivian has pointed out, our office has already redirected, redirected three of our attorneys to spend a considerable amount of their time working on these issues, but frankly, the frequency of these matters are outpacing and outstripping our ability to keep up with them. Now, we do have many other priorities in the office, one of which is pointed out in the CAO's memo, "The American Dream," where we redirected one of our lawyers to handle that important program, where we're taking, as you know, very blighted properties in the heart of our residential communities, properties that have been boarded up, there's crucially crime involved, and we're turning those properties around in a very innovative program. So yes, we are continually redirecting resources in our office. The workplace violence issue is one that we've spent a lot of time and effort redirecting. It's just outstripping our ability to keep up. And we do have a request in the upcoming budget, and this is more of a request that was done on an interim budget basis. Thank you.
Mr. President, I think when this item was reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee, certainly there was great support and belief that this is an important unit. We asked the CAO to look at funding within the budget of the City Attorney and the Personnel Department for this year with the expectation that next year's budget would look at this with a full review. And Bill, maybe you can comment if we made any progress on that incident.
And that's exactly how we're approaching this. As stated in our January 31st memo, this issue was actually given to two offices to look at. One was our Personnel Department, the second was our City Attorney. If you notice, and as stated in our memo, the Personnel Department, who's responsible for offering training and then some critical incident debriefing and onsite behavioral intervention, was able to find resources within the existing budget to address this matter. Our City Attorney is now asking for an appropriation of $400,000 to create this unit. I agree this unit is a priority. But what we also state is, within the context of their overall budget, that being the City Attorney's Office, is that they look at existing resources and assign staff on a priority basis. Reference was made to, well, the bottom line is use their existing resources now. Reference was made to the American Dream program. I don't doubt that's a critical program, but yet, it was, it's something that was not approved in the budget. And the City Attorney, through an assessment of their, what they currently have available to support their many programs, decided this was of a higher priority than something like the workforce violence. We ask all departments, because we do have some financial challenges, to closely look at the reassignment or realignment of staff to fund their most critical programs before they come to the Council for an appropriation. And also remind you that our financial policies explicitly state that new programs that are recommended during the middle of a budget year not receive any additional funds outside of the normal budget process. We have a commitment to look at this program during the budget process, but at this juncture, we're asking the City Attorney, as we've told numerous departments, to look at your existing resources first, and then where appropriate, fund each program based on what has the greatest priority for the city and the services we provide.
I would like to address just briefly that the City Attorney's Office has, as I stated previously, since 2003, been doing the very best that it could to channel resources in this way. It certainly was not the City Attorney's Office's responsibility to do workplace violence training, which really falls within the purview of the Personnel Department. But the Personnel Department didn't have the funding and didn't have the people with the experience to do workplace violence training, and so our office allowed us to do workplace violence training, where we trained complete departments and tried to help assist the departments to reach the goals that were set forth by the previous mayor of having all the city employees trained by last May 6th. All city employees in the city were not trained because we didn't have the resources to train the very largest departments. My office, I'm very grateful to my office for all the efforts that it has made, for allowing me to be chairperson of the Citywide Threat Assessment Team, for allowing the time that it takes to go and meet with CTAT and address important issues. And I believe that this is something that we do need additional funding for.
And we just appreciate the opportunity to have addressed the council here today on the issue, to provide you with the information.
Thank you very much for the information. And, Mr. President, I'd ask that we approve the combined Personnel, Budget, and Finance report with a real emphasis to the CAO for number, item six, asking him to work with the personnel and the City Attorney, and attempting to find funds during this budget year, and that we certainly consider it during next budget cycle.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. I mean, sorry, Mr. Parks. Mr. Zion is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue obviously involves a lot of people, forty thousand city employees, and I commend the City Attorney's Office for doing what they have done with that. But I agree, it's the Personnel Department's responsibility to have that training for all departments, the Fire Department, the Police Department. We know that audit just came out about the Fire Department, discrimination, hostile environment, et cetera. We're going to be dealing with that. My concern is, what have other cities done to address this? We know about the post office in Goleta, where a former employee came in, killed individuals, killed a neighbor, et cetera. What have other cities done to address the situation? I'm sure it's not unique to Los Angeles.
That is actually not an issue that we have looked at, but we can do that. We can take a look at that and report back in regards to that. I do understand, though, just from going to conferences and so forth, that as a general rule, all the entities, whether it's private or public, try to work with a team, a team approach to workplace violence, which is what the Citywide Threat Assessment Team is all about, because it does have, you know, the psychologist on it, the attorneys on it, the police officers on it. And so I do know that all of the entities work on a team concept so that people are not, and supervisors are not out there in a void, trying to decide what to do with a potentially dangerous employee or someone from the outside. And I'd like to emphasize that at this point, our time is not taken up with the training because we are understanding that Personnel Department's going to take over the training, you know, although in critical situations, we would make ourselves available, certainly, but we are thoroughly inundated with dealing with the day-to-day cases that come in now because they are coming in so quickly.
And do we get prosecution on any of these cases? A former employee who gets upset and comes back and wants to retaliate, whether there's threats, physical or verbal, or weapons, or et cetera? Have we prosecuted any of these cases?
Yes, they are usually felony prosecutions, so they usually are not handled by the City Attorney's Office. There are a few that result in misdemeanor prosecutions. But on the log that everyone should have, in those instances where you see a case number, where it says CRA, that's Corporate Restraining Order Case Number, almost in all instances where there is a, not every instance, but in most of the instances where there is a CRA number, there is also felony prosecution as well.
And we find a success with those felony prosecutions?
Absolutely. They seem to pretty much, you know, swing right through.
And the other concern I have is on access. We know that when the public comes to City Hall, we have access, different access routes and screening. When employees come in, they show their ID. When employee leaves, termination, departs, retires from the City of Los Angeles, what is our capture rate on those identification cards so they won't be able to just flash that card, come in, and retaliate against people that they didn't like when they were working for the City of Los Angeles?
It's not as good as we would like it to be, although currently, in most instances, the card can be deactivated, but the person would still have the card in their possession. What happens is if they're not, you know, terminated and here, where we can say, you know, "Give us your identification card," you know, they're away from the workplace when whatever happens, then they end up having that identification card with them, and that is a problem.
Well, that's a concern I have, is that seeing people at the front counter, the main entrance to City Hall, see employees walk through, they just flash a card. I was at a news conference in the mayor's office one afternoon. Individual picked up a city identification card, got himself into the mayor's press conference. The security thought it was a city employee, and it turns out this person found that employee card on the ground and picked it up and wanted to go see what's happening in the mayor's office with the news conference. So I know that access is available. We may want to come in. I know we have the cards that have been distributed to all departments. We may want to come in with a color-coded system where every year it changes or something so we can keep it current. Because once you get that card, if I were to walk in a building with anyone's card, they look at that, the color code, whether it's red, white, and blue, whatever the case, they don't pay attention to it. And that's a concern with former employees, as we've seen happen oftentimes, when they leave the employment. That gives them access to come back and cause this activity. And you said, we've had it at Piper Tech, we've had it at other sites. The most recent was the Street Services, where that incident took place.
And that is a prime example of the type of follow-through that we'd like to be able to do, of when you have an inherent problem that we don't have the time to address. There's no department of the city that's tasked with addressing, you know, workplace violence specifically. You know, it's spread out. There is a Citywide Threat Assessment Team, but we try, when we can, to address security issues that may involve, you know, coordinating with General Services, coordinating with the Police Department, you know, deciding what to do to ensure the safety of the workplace. We don't have the time to do that type of follow-through, to address, you know, those inherent problems that we could do if our time was solely devoted to workplace violence.
Okay. Thank you.
And many of these issues probably fall within the domain of the Personnel Department, who has a large role, as you put it out yourself, council member, a large role to play in this. And we work very closely, cooperatively with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. Anybody else wishing to be heard on that? Not, we have a motion for Mr. Parks.
Personnel Budget Report with the emphasis on Instruction Number Six.
Okay. We'll move those with that emphasis. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. We have items three and four need to be sent forthwith, and I think our next item then is twenty-one. Is that correct?
Item twenty-one was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Sylvia Hawkins, come forward for two minutes on item twenty-one.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. To Mr. Dave Washington, Los Angeles Planning Commissioner, we must say no to underground living because the truth must be reported about the clinic driving car accident that was reported, that one or two people was found dead. The truth must be reported that over three hundred black people was living under this clinic is now dead. Since there is a war going on between blacks and Latinos, thousands living under dirt in Orange County fire area is now dead. Even with the burning of churches, schools, and buildings, they are now dead under. We are asking all killing under to cease, to start a scene war so that United States of America government and public people can keep an account on what is going on so it will not be a hidden war. If there is a black-and-white issue that is going on, why can't we have a war that is seen so that we can be aware of who is dying, whether they're under schools, jail cells, or buildings? So I am with not wars going under and now false reporting or hidden reports. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. Anybody else wishing to be heard on twenty-one? If not, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-six was called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Nobody wishing to speak on this. I'd like to open the roll slowly on this one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
Okay. That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting or referral?
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused Tuesday, February 21st for personal business. A motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Padilla moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimous vote, and he is excused.
Councilmember Rosenau requests to be excused March 21st, 22nd, and 24th for city business. A motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Reyes will move, Ms. Perry will second. If there is no objection, that's a unanimous vote, and he is excused.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Desk is clear. Colleagues, any announcements? Announcements? If not, can I please ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourned motions? Okay. Ms. Han? Oh, sorry, Ms. Grill.
I know yesterday, and I just wanted to add, Ms. Perry talked about Willie Campbell, and we had all just found out, and I don't know if you want to add as well. I haven't heard of the actual services, but she really had an incredible resume of things that she accomplished. She was Vice Chair and Board of Directors of the African Development Foundation that really provides and promotes broad-based sustainable development in sub-surround Africa. She was the founder and board member of Women Law and Development internationally. She was also the president and board chair of OEF International from 1978 to March 1983, and just used her amazing experiences to be a voice for the international community, particularly for women. And I was proud to have her somewhere here and part of the trusteeship that there are a group of women here who are trying to look internationally and how to improve the lives of women. And so just wanted to add to what Ms. Perry mentioned, Willie Campbell, who really was a wonderful woman and someone we will miss very much here in Los Angeles. So I wanted to add my condolences to that. And I'm not sure if Ms. Perry knows any of the services, but you may be able to add to that.
We're waiting to get the details, but you're absolutely right. And I think, as women, we have a lot to be grateful for. Maureen Kendall always, has always gone out of her way to introduce us to female role models in the public and the private sector and the philanthropic community, and I think Willie kind of hit all three. And as I said yesterday, she was really way ahead of her time. And as a personal note, you know, we got our hair done at the same place, and she always, whenever she'd come in, everybody was always happy to see her. She always had something interesting and fun to say, but she was always very gracious, and her conversation was very intelligent, and it's not only a loss on a personal level. She was a wonderful human being and very inspiring. She was still very, very, very active, and I had no idea that she was even ill.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like us to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Jaime Gonzalez of Wilmington. Fortunately, Mr. Gonzalez was tragically killed by a hit-and-run driver a week ago in Wilmington. He was seventy-six. He was a retired lumberjack working at Consolidated Lumber Company and some lumber company, both in Wilmington for years, and he survived by his wife. Mr. Gonzalez was known as a grandfather figure to his Wilmington neighbors, often eating dinner in their homes, lending rented movies, and chatting on front porches. He often brought popsicles for the neighborhood kids. One of his neighbors, Salvador Delgado, said, "We were good friends, and he was like an uncle, brother for me and my wife. We worked together for many, many years. And for the last fifteen years, he went and bought the Daily Breeze for me every single day." Apparently, even on the day that he was killed, this neighbor came home and found the Daily Breeze on his porch, so that was one of the things he had done. The police still have not been able to apprehend the person that was involved in that hit-and-run accident, so we hope that happens. But we're going to miss him very much in Wilmington.
Thank you. Ms. Han, Mr. Weisar?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Fumio Nakahiro. Mr. Nakahiro was born on December 3rd, 1942, in Pasadena, and was a lifelong resident of Highland Park. He proudly served in the U.S. Army's 40th Infantry Division during the Korean War and was a recipient of the Combat Infantryman Badge for his active participation in ground combat. Mr. Nakahiro was a longtime employee of Central Parking and All Right Parking Companies in Los Angeles. He worked in the community of Little Tokyo all his life, where he was considered an institution, and to his passing on Tuesday, January 31st, when he died of a heart attack. He is survived by his second wife, Kyoko, his two sons, Fumio, Robert, who was an active resident northeast Los Angeles, and Richard Paul, two grandchildren, Chelseaa and Megan, and his four sisters, Frances, Mary, Takako, and Yoshida. and his four sisters, Frances, Mary, Takako, and Yoshiko, along with many loving nephews and nieces who will miss him dearly.
Yes, Mr. Reyes will second that. Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Parks.
President, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Dorothy O'Neill, passed away on January 24th. She had spent most of her life in providing care for seniors. She took up this passion after graduating from high school and continued throughout the last 30 years. She began to spread her reputation and was used by a number of organizations, the First AME Church, LAPD, and also the Social Security Department. She cared for several hundred seniors in her time and basically assisted many of the senior women in helping them in the sense of their own personal grooming. She passed away on January 24th. Also, I'd ask to adjourn in memory of Dr. Alton Roberson. He was one of the first five of black neurosurgeons in the United States, who's licensed Maryland, Georgia, Washington, D.C., and California, a graduate of Howard High School in Chattanooga, Tennessee, where he was the valedictorian of his class. Also graduated from Fitz University in Nashville, Tennessee in 1954, and Mahari Medical College in Nashville in '59. He was appointed to the Diplomat American Board of Neurological Surgery in '73, was a past president of Charles Drew Medical Society, and a member of numerous other medical associations. He was also the clinical instructor at White Memorial Hospital and the clinical instructor at Martin Luther King General Hospital and the Charles Drew Medical Center. To his credit, he was the chairman of the board and president and founder of the Comprehensive Medical Facility Incorporated, the first Los Angeles health maintenance organization. He also was a member of the Methodist faith and also a member of the Alpha Phi, Alpha Fraternity. He was born in July 1932, passed away at the age of 73 in January 19006. His funeral service were held at Angela's Funeral Home in January 27th. He survived by his wife, three children, and a host of relatives. And then finally, I'd ask to adjourn in memory of Dr. George Jackson Jr., born June 4th, 1938, a graduate of LA High School, UCLA, and USC Medical School. He was a vascular surgeon, also a diplomat on the American Board of Surgery and a National Board of Medical Examiners. He served as Secretary of Academic Senate at Charles Drew University Medical and Science. He's also appointed Department of Family Medicine in the School of Applied Health at Drew Medical Center. He passed away at the age of 67 on December 20th, 2005. And I would ask that because of his involvement in the community, Ms. Perry and Ms. Han, Mr. Wesson also join on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all, colleagues and members of the public. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.